Folks, according to my watch, I have 6:30. It's time to start the meeting. This is the August 12th, 2021 Public Forum, and want to welcome everybody. And if we would, bow our heads in a moment of silence before we start, please. I'm in. Commissioners, you've got the agenda before you. Have a motion to adopt it.
I slow moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Lentz to adopt the agenda. Do I have a second?
I see.
I have a second from Commissioner Widmer. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Ayes, carry. The floor is now open for public comment. Be sure and state your name and your address. Speak into the microphone and take your mask off when you're talking into the microphone so you can be heard. Who's up? Okay, Martha.
I'm Martha Campbell, 149 Maryland Place. I want to thank you, Mayor Helms, for requiring that persons entering this building be masked. I saw the signs on the door and the extra masks, and I want to thank you for that. Tonight's news indicated that the Buncombe County Commissioners are expected tomorrow to reinstate the county's state of emergency and mask mandate for indoor spaces in unincorporated areas of the county. And I'm presuming that as before, our incorporated community town will follow that recommendation from the county. This is really a challenging time, as we're sort of figuring out where we are and what's next with the COVID and masking and spread and so forth. In light of that, I ask that in addition to masking, that the council officially make Montreat a leader in being part of the solution by strongly recommending that all staff be fully vaccinated or provide, as Buncombe County is doing for staff, weekly testing results. This is with an understanding that there are people whose medical conditions may make having a vaccination not good for them, and that would be with the advice of their doctor, to avoid the vaccination. But for the rest, and that would be handled within personnel confidentially. We know that the vaccinations will protect our staff, who are essential workers in our community, but also their families and their associates and the community. My suggestion is if there are those who are hesitant, if they've been hesitant all along to have the vaccine, that there should be a way that confidentially their questions can be answered. There's a lot of new information. Every day we hear more things. But perhaps confidentially through some group like the Board of Health, so that staff and supervision are not fully responsible for answering everybody's questions about the vaccines and about COVID, that health-related individuals from the county be included. I stopped short of asking for a vaccine mandate. I think it's a great idea, but it's not necessarily what every entity decides to do. There's, we know there's businesses that are and businesses that aren't. Several government agencies and the military and so forth are requesting that everybody be vaccinated. That would be up to you. That's your decision, of course, to make. We don't need to wait for other municipalities to do this, and then we tag on to them. Having this strong recommendation for vaccines can be something we do as leaders in the larger community, within the region, and within the state. So I hope that you'll consider having a strong recommendation for staff vaccines. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. We are joining Buncombe County. They've already asked us, and I told Alex to reply possibly that we would join them in the emergency mandate and so forth, not wearing masks in public buildings. Who is next?
Letta Jean Taylor, 386 Oklahoma Road, Montreat.
Welcome. Long time no see.
You're going to hear from me a couple of times tonight, from the last meeting. I just wanted to remind everyone about me. There are four organizations in Buncombe County that have these systems because of me, because I can't.
If you will remember, Peace and Providence up at Kentucky, those homeowners had to pay for the infrastructure. They were assessed by property. And that was what our plan was for the upper Oklahoma area. And it went whole too, also with the ETJ up Graybeard. The reason we put in the ordinance that ETJ and Oklahoma had to attach our water and sewer was because the Buncombe County Health Department, when we met with them, told us that one person could keep four of their neighbors from building because the lots are small, and to put a well and septic and home on a lot would impact everyone around you. So as you all consider it, and as it comes back from planning and zoning, I hope you'll remember that, that we want everyone to be able to build on their lot, but not everyone can because of perking or because their neighbor has a septic system right next to their property where they want to put a well in. Thank you.
Thank you, Letta Jean. Who's next? Tom? Yeah. And who's next? Anyone? Yes, sir.
My statement, is that on? Is it on? Okay. My statement is regarding a statement in the mayor's summary from the July 8th Town Council meeting. And it's in regard to Harry Jones asking his three questions, consider and act on these. And the first one, which is what I wish to correct, is how the comprehensive plan is being used and applied. So, Mayor Helms, I think it's correct to say that your statement was that the comprehensive plan had not been widely implemented since its inception in 2008. And I beg to differ with this incorrect statement. Our previous mayor, Letta Jean Taylor, and the Town Council began immediately to utilize the 2008 comprehensive plan as a guide for setting plans and acting on them for the benefit of the town, citizens, institutions, and visitors. I served for two terms on the Town Council, and I know that we used the comprehensive plan as a guide to develop our plans each year by reviewing the plan at our annual town retreat in great detail. When we considered how we had met, and that's where we considered how we had met the goals of the plan and what changes we needed to make. It guided us with regard to prioritizing budgeting, capital expenditures, and laid a clear path for the coming year. Further, we referred to the plan during the year at Town Council meetings from time to time to stay on track. This was accomplished under the strong leadership of Mayor Taylor from 2008 through her last term ending December of 2014. As a remedy, I'd like the statement to be retracted and corrected. And I'd like my remarks about this entered into the minutes summary of this meeting. And since it appears that the current council is not using the 2008 plan as a guide, perhaps it should start now until a new plan has been agreed upon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. I do retract that. Widesly not implemented was a bad choice of words on my part, and I apologize. You're, well, I know it did. And a lot of it has been done, but a lot of it is still to be done. Okay. Okay, who's next? Mary?
Mary, Standard 118 Shenandoah Terrace. The June public forum and Town Council meetings were only partially livestreamed. And additionally, due to an unexpected technical error, the meetings were not recorded and therefore were unavailable to be seen by the public. In July, there were more problems. The screen view of the meeting was the size of a postage stamp, and no one speaking from the public microphone could be heard. The town clerk has a separate recording of these meetings, which easily can be translated by the clerk into a form that can be shared. Will the council have the town clerk, and I urge you to do so, send the link of the June and July meeting audio recordings to those on the Sunshine List and also post these links on the town's website and on the town's Facebook site, so that the public can fully hear all that was said in lieu of the technical difficulties that were encountered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Tom, since you're the technical guy, I'll let you fill that one.
Mary and I have had at least three, maybe four conversations on this topic since June. And we have been working to improve the technology. Josh is an example of that in the back, and so are some of the other procedures that we've done. Mary, if I go in and look at how many people look at and listen to any of our meetings, it's very small. And I'm not sure with the need for us to technologically make that translation of the software that she records on to something that is intelligible by the public is worth our time, considering the fact that everything is in the minutes. And it was also summarized earlier on in the mayor's summary.
I would disagree. It's not that difficult to translate it. We have recordings that are a matter of public records, which Joe was able to translate. I would not have been able to. And even if the number is small, as reflected by the small nature of what we have here tonight, it is something that can be done. It is not that difficult. And given the, actually, the number of conversations we've had for well more than a year, not just over the last two months, on the difficulties in getting the recordings done well, I would again ask the question, why not or make those links available? Especially both of those meetings were pretty important and had a lot of things going on. Also, again, I will make a formal request that the council ask the town clerk to translate those and send them as a link and not have to pay $3, not that that's overwhelming, to make a formal public request. And I would limit it to those two, especially as things seem to be hopefully resolving themselves. So I guess the answer is yes or no?
I don't speak for administration. If it's possible, I'm sure it will be considered. But I can't speak for the council either.
Well, I would ask the council to weigh in on that, then.
Okay. You want in?
I'm simply asking that those two audiotapes be sent as link to the entire Sunshine List. It's a straightforward request.
Understand. Alex, how expensive is that going to be to go back and do that?
I'm not sure about the translation software and the standard reference, but we can look into it and do.
Joe is able to find it online for free.
That's great.
I'm sure he would be willing to volunteer to help, though.
For the very small number of people that are interested in going back and hearing those, couldn't they come and listen to the audiotape?
If you send out a link and we're.
No, no, come in and just listen to it.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
They're not translated. I don't think they can hear it, can they, on your version?
Yes, she does. She does that already for me. So, but you can also have it as a link, which, I mean, you're sending out a mayor's summary and then the minutes, but having the full link is just, in this new technology that we have, I would urge your support in having that done.
Well, we're working on that new technology.
Well, I'm referring to the last two meetings because I will listen to them.
Okay. Well, come on in, and we'll let you listen to it.
No, no, I'm asking for a link.
No, I don't think that's going to happen as a commission.
You've got another method available that doesn't cost Angie so much time and energy.
But she already does it, can do it. It's a public records request.
Well, public records, you can come read it. We'll mail it to you, or you can pay $3.
The audio file?
No. Public record, it doesn't have to be the audio file.
If that's the public record, I am simply.
We have the minutes from the meeting, Mary. That's public record.
So is the audio file.
Well, I tell you what, it is, and you can come listen to it. You're the person who's requesting to hear it. I haven't had any other requests.
That it's sent. I'm not sure that everybody knows that they can make that as a public records request. And I would like that to be recorded in the methods, and I think that it gives everybody the full sense of the meetings, that's what you are striving for. It costs, I won't address Angie since that's her, but I believe that she does that already. So it's simply a matter of providing a link.
When y'all do public, when you do the Montreat today, just put a link out there that people can come in and listen to it if they want to. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, so you won't post a link that people can get online. Thank you very much.
No, that's not what I said, Mary. I'm not going back to correct those things. We're trying to improve it for the future, so I'm not going to go back. If those people, if you're that interested in listening to those, please come in and.
Oh, no, I'm just asking that a link be sent to those two meetings, not for anything further back.
Those who like it, we may be able to send a link to them. I don't know. We'll look into it, but we're not going to send it out to all on the Sunshine List.
Well, it certainly would have allowed one to hear the full context of both sets of the meetings, which is your ultimate goal, since there were technical problems experienced by the town for both of those meetings. Perhaps there's a higher obligation from the town, but I'll leave it at that. We have the answer.
Thank you.
The meetings were open, Miss Standard, so folks had all the reason to be here. They could heard every word. So there are other options.
Let me, let me, let me share that with you. You are also invited to the Zoom meetings, so that you don't have to make that. If you were not offering that, I had a reasonable expectation of being able to hear it because you offered the invitation to the Zoom meeting, so I would share that with you as well. I made the decision not to come to the last meeting because it would be offered on Zoom, and that was extended by the town.
Mary, I'd just like to make the same comment that I've made to you since last fall. Number one, we have tried to create a good system for streaming, which is over and above what is required. It is something that this council decided to do. Previous councils had not done it. So therefore, we thought it was a nice addition. Number two, I apologize for the fact that we've had technical difficulties since the equipment was installed in the fall. But each time, we learn a little bit more and we improve our ability to deliver. So I think that not only are they getting the minutes, which are required, of course, by law, and that the audio is available from Angie to come in and listen to, and that there is a mayor's summary. But for us to offer a Zoom recording is far more than what is required of us, and it is really opening up the transparency of the work of this council and this government.
When you refer to the former council, I'm not exactly sure what you mean. Do you mean that of Letta Jean's administration or before this current board was elected? Since it's been since 2015, and I don't think that that technology was available. So to use the phrase that the former council didn't offer it, that technology wasn't available. And it has been more than a year since we've been in the building, and it's not working, so it is time for it to work.
In my business, when I was in business, we were doing Zoom-type meetings back in the middle 2000s.
That certainly was beyond the general expertise that we all now have with Zoom. And I am not trying to be as contentious as you think I am, which I realize comes through, because I have made this an issue for a long time. And it has been, we're in a new building that was expensive. And I am glad to hear someone here now monitoring, because it's not just a problem that existed for the last two times. But I want to step down now and leave this to other people. I think we've talked enough about it. Thank you.
Well, I'll just say one more thing, Mary, as you're walking away, and that is that I don't appreciate us being criticized on a regular basis for when we apologize for something and that we're doing something over and above what is expected.
If you think my comments go beyond the pale, I'm sorry for that. But I will have to go back, since you brought up the issue, is back to my first experience was in January of 2020, in which I requested, I waited for a long, this is before we moved into the new building. It was the public forum, and I waited for three weeks for the Zoom or for the recording to be made, made public. And I requested of the town clerk, when will the recording be made public and posted? And I received an email, all of this is public question, from the town clerk saying it would be posted shortly, that there were some problems with the public forum comment about the settlement issue, that, what the sound. And I said, well, why not play the audio recordings? That didn't happen. So I received another email, more or less, I forget, saying that she would let me know when that particular meeting recording would be posted. After waiting a while longer, I went down to the town office and spoke to town administrator, Mr. Carmichael. By the time I got back home, I received an email, and this is all public record, that the town clerk was misinformed, that no such recording existed. That's all. And immediately after that, within last part of January of 2020, first part of February 2020, the town website was altered. And for a long time, there had been holding spaces on the town website for audio recordings of the meeting. Without explanation, those were taken down, those holding spaces for the audio meetings. So this has a long history. If I have offended you, I apologize. But I do think that being in this new building and having this long term experience, because I am one of those few who don't take the time to listen. Thank you.
Who's next? Tom?
Tom Priss, 98, Priss wrote, I just want to express Montreek's communities appreciation to Letta Jean for what she did, for Mary, for Eric, or who else is Martha? And for all of you that y'all have served us and are serving us. And so many of us can't imagine giving our retirement up for something like this. And we just really appreciate that. And I'm so thankful that Letta Jean and all the other former counselors are here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Yes, sir.
How are y'all doing? I saw the Montreek College is obviously.
Name and address.
I'm sorry, Bill Roberts, 155 Woodland Road. Obviously, the college is 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 back up and open. And there's some students arriving today. I just have had two years of of parties and loud noises. And I'm just going to have a good attitude about it this year. I'm hoping that the police department from from the top all the way down understands how the ordinance are written, what they're allowed to do, what they're not allowed to do. 11 o'clock, there's not supposed to be any noise after 11 o'clock. And, you know, I hope we can have some communication. If I if I ask for some clarification, I hope I get a response back. I rarely do. And I'm just hoping that it won't be a problem this year. Thank you very much.
Bill, do you know this is rented yet or not?
It didn't have much activity this summer. It's been on the market, but I have no clue.
Okay, because they, I know the chief's been trying to get up with that party and see if they had rented it or not.
Okay.
I know you've been working on that this summer. So, you know, he's looking out for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. And who would be next, please? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Sarah Baughman here, representing Montreek College, 310 Gator Circle. We are welcoming our students back for the fall semester. And we are anticipating our seventh record consecutive year of record enrollment. We have approximately 200 new students that will be arriving and moving into residence halls tomorrow. We had a small group of new students arrive yesterday. We have just wrapped up or are in the process of wrapping up a $2.5 million renovation to Howerton Dining Hall and also some upgrades and refreshes to three of our residence hall lobbies. We're just really excited to get back to hopefully what feels like a slightly more normal semester. Right now, we are asking all of our returning students and new students to provide proof of vaccination or a negative COVID test result upon reentry. And we will continue to rapid test any student who has any symptoms. The second that they display any symptoms, we have partnerships in place to provide quarantine housing and isolate any student that is symptomatic. And we will continue to manage it as we did last last academic year very successfully. The college will be providing a COVID dashboard on our website. So if you go to montre.edu/coronavirus, that dashboard that we used last year will remain in play this year. So if you have any questions or concerns about the number of students or employees who have tested positive for COVID, it will be updated every morning on that dashboard. Any questions from?
Larry, y'all gonna have the same mask policy you had last year in class and on campus?
So we are kind of waiting to see what comes out from the county. We know it's coming. We're not 100% on what that will be. To date, we have followed the recommendations that we've received to date, which are if you are not vaccinated, you should be masking. If you are vaccinated, you are not currently required to mask in our classrooms. So we are waiting for a little more guidance from the county on that.
Okay.
If we need, we, with all things COVID, we pivot when we need to. And when guidance changes, we we send additional communication out.
Sarah, what's your student population now?
Yeah, so we will probably have about just under 700 students for traditional undergraduate student population. That's what we're anticipating. We are at 644 last fall. So we're expecting about 30 to 40 more new students. Yeah.
Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, thank you. Appreciate the update. Got time for about one more person?
Richard Bowes, 160 Woodland Road. Just was prompted by the previous speaker.
You can take your masks off.
Oh, thank you. I was just prompted by the previous speaker. Apparently, according to WLOS, Buncombe County has announced that on August 17th, they will vote to reinstate the mask mandate required for all indoor facilities. Were y'all aware of that already?
Thank you, Richard. Anyone else? All right, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn till 7 o'clock, which is just about a minute. Then we can start our regular meeting. They have a motion? Have a motion from Commissioner Fouchet. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Lentz. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes opposed. Ayes carry. Stand adjourned. All right, that was a quick minute. We have 7 o'clock. If everyone would please stand, face the flag, and we'll say the pledge of allegiance together.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Had it for about a week and a half now. They have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I move to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Jane. Have a motion to accept the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Mayor Pro Tim Whitmer. Discussion. All those in favor, either saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. My comments tonight are the masks. We are going to require them in Montreek facilities as far as the the town facilities, the town hall. If you enter a town hall, ask that you wear a mask. If you go to the Public Services Building, ask that you wear a mask. Helps protect our employees and protects you, protects you also. And of course, you just heard what Richard said about the county mandate. In public buildings, you will be required to wear masks. Want to welcome Ezra Mele, Mele? Mele, he's with the Asheville Citizen Time, Black Mountain Newspaper, and is the new reporter on the beat. So we welcome you to our meetings. Look forward to working with you in the future. Those who are going to speak tonight, please remove your mask when you're talking into the microphone and then replace your mask. That way, the the recordings can be made and we can hear you. And those on Zoom can can hear you also. We had a problem last month with the, like, the microphone died for the public. So be sure and speak into the microphone, hold it up close to your mouth so that you can be heard. Alex, would you like to cover your review and cover the consent agenda, please?
I would. On tonight's agenda, you've got the July 8th public forum meeting minutes, the July 8th Town Council meeting minutes, and the July 30th Town Council Special Meeting Minutes. And as far as my communications tonight, I just wanted to update you that we have received our first tranche of ARPA funds, the American Rescue Act Plan Act. The first tranche is half. So we got received $138,000. And then we'll have in the next year, another $138,000 that will be dispersed to Montreek. There are lots of strings attached to what those dollars can be spent on. There are lots of restrictions to what those dollars can be spent on. But we'll be working with you all to come up with a plan for how we want to spend those dollars within within those limitations. The town has set up a separate bank account for these funds for the recommendations from the state. So we can keep these funds completely separate from our general funds dollars as well. And that's it for my my communications tonight.
Any questions of Alex on those?
Alex, I know earlier on, they weren't real clear yet as to what those provisions are. How about now?
So there, there's a couple of things going on that make that vague. One, the treasury guidance was was broad. It was broad and vague initially. Two, their states are actually receiving money for capital projects, which they will be distributing to for projects in local areas, too. So a lot of the advice that we're getting from the school of government, the state treasurer's offices, so slow down and wait to see what will be covered by the state dollars first and then decide how it's spent and the local dollars. But also, there are interpretations within those broad guidelines. And we're getting different interpretations from different people. So we're we're working towards what we can spend those on. There will be an amount that we don't know the number yet. Within that $138,000, there will be a revenue replacement amount that can be spent on anything. So there will be some some of those dollars that we can spend however we choose without strings attached. We don't know that formula yet, so we don't know what percentage of that of those dollars will be revenue replacement. But the the general broad treasury guidance or the categories like water lines can be used. Those money can be used for water lines, stormwater features, sewer lines. It cannot be used for roads or sidewalks. They can be used for cybersecurity. They can be used for certain personnel expenses. But I'm not sure that we're going to have those expenses. And forgetting the other category. But there are limitations on what the those dollars can spend on. So we're we're trying to get a clearer picture. One of the things that we're hoping to be able to present to you is to use it for the financial software that we've had in our capital improvement plan for the last couple of years. It definitely falls under cybersecurity, but it's not clear as if if we can use the dollars for the whole cyber or the whole financial package, or if we have to break out what portion of cybersecurity versus what portions, just the regular financial software. So we're still trying to get those answers. We're still working on it. We're looking at what other municipalities are doing. We know that other municipalities have talked to vendors about using their ARPA funds for the finance software package. So we're trying to find out who those municipalities are so we can talk to them, see how how they're interpreting what their information they're getting. We're also going to be looking at waterline projects that are would be coming up in the capital improvement plan to advance that project as well as a meter replacement technology. So we'll be pulling all that together and presenting, not in the capital improvement plan next year, but even before that, we'll be presenting options for how we can spend these ARPA dollars. We have until 2024 to obligate the dollars and until 2026 to spend the dollars. So we're, as I said, we're getting advice from the state to wait and see what the state will cover with their dollars. But we're also know that they're not going to cover things like the finance software. So we're we're in the formation process at this point of ideas and priorities for for those dollars. And we'll be presenting something to you in the future.
Good explanation. Thanks.
Any other questions of Alex?
Alex, when will the second tranche come? Mentioned next year, is that 12 months from now?
I believe that is 12 months.
Anyone else? Thanks for that, Alex. Commissioners, you've received the written reports on from the administrative department, finance, planning and zoning, police, public works and water sanitation and streets. Are there any questions and or comments regarding those reports that you received?
I just wanted to thank the police for upping the number of traffic stops by three times what you did last year at this time. And I hope that helps. We've had a lot of complaints about speeders and tickets usually slow people down. So thanks.
Any others?
I've got a couple of things. Barry, did you guys ever find that water leak that was running amok?
We ended up finding three different leaks in town that added up to the loss that we had.
Good investigative work. The second thing I'd like to do is just praise the staff on the finances for year end. Alex, Darlene, all the staff need to be praised for coming through a very difficult year with a significant net income. Our our revenues were 1% over what you budgeted, and our expenses were 10% under what was budgeted. So, you know, that they gave us that net income of $264,000, which at a time is really needed. So thank you all for your budget consciousness and your attention to this. And Darlene, welcome back.
Any other questions or comments on the reports? If not, we'll open the floor again for public comment. When you speak, be sure and take your mask off and speak into the microphone so we can get it recorded and you can be heard. Letta Jean, you want to come up again? Okay.
This is again in response to some of the comments from last month's meeting. And I thought, since most of you are new, I might give you a little history lesson and please don't be offended. In 1996, we formed a committee to do the second Montreek Tomorrow Report. We had completed all the goals of the original report. And then we completed all the goals of the second Montreek Committee Report and hired Land Design and Jim Fields Group to guide us through a very formal comprehensive plan. And I don't know if you've seen them or do you have them? And I, I don't know if you've seen them, or do you have them? You have them. It's very detailed, and we use that every single month as we got ready to plan for our meetings. Our retreats were based on the, that report. The goals of each department was based on that report so that we had a plan. We had a vision for what Montry wanted, what we wanted Montry to look like. The Comprehensive Matrix had 97 recommended, recommended implementation strategies. There were 10 categories. There were 45 short-term goals, 42 midterm goals, and 10 long-term goals. By 2014, 73% of those 97 were completed. However, that doesn't really give a good picture because some of those, if you had a chance to look through it, a midterm goal, for example, was to assign parking permits for residents for a nominal fee. We decided that the taxpayers had enough to pay for the town, and that was not a goal we wanted to pursue. So that was put on the indefinite list for some other commission to talk about. The development of Unified Development Ordinance, the UDO, and the wayfinding were not completed because we just didn't have the money to do it. They're really great ideas, but we just didn't have the money to go forward with that. The annexation of the Graybeard ETJ took a lot of time, a lot of public discussion, a lot of meetings. And after all that, we decided to wait for the people who live up there for a voluntary annexation of that property. And to my knowledge, you haven't received that either. So we, we followed the plan and the vision. And consequently, we have a great steep slope ordinance. We have a community wildlife habitat. We have the first land here in North Carolina. We have an Open Space Conservation Ordinance Committee. The path from the gate to Lake Susan got as far as lookout. We had to stop there because we had a disagreement with the MRA about right of way, and legal costs took up that last bit of walkway. The bike path was completed. We have a woolly addled plan. We have a landscaping plan for the gate. It's a cool plan. But again, we didn't have the money to execute the plan. We had two educational meetings a year to make us more aware of our environment and what our responsibility is. And there are a lot, I mean, I could go through the whole list and tell you all the things that were accomplished in all those years. So you all need, sorry, you all should consider looking at that plan and revising it or going on and seeing what else this community wants. The mission, vision for the town board was to seek ways to maintain and improve the quality of life, to preserve the natural beauty, to promote responsible growth while maintaining our community image, heritage, and tradition. And that's what we did as we followed that plan and had in 2008. So and if you're interested, all those retreat minutes are part of the binders that Angie would be happy to get for you to look at. And if you read the minutes or look through the minutes, you see how the ordinance was developed, the discussion that went around them. So it gives you a really good picture of what happened in since 2008. I just have one more thing. I want to say thank you to Barry for patching the patches on Oklahoma Road. Jane walks around a lot of those holes, too. So thank you very much.
Letta Jane, we did put in the budget this year to revisit the comprehensive plan and to update it and using the old comprehensive plan as a base. Well, we, we didn't have the money the last couple of years, and we just had to, we sort of squeezed it out this year to get it. That's, that's on the list. It is. Okay, who's next? Public comment. Who's next? No one? Okay, we'll move on. Let's see, where am I? No, we don't have any old business tonight. We have plenty of new business. Item A under new business is proclamation designating September the 4th as Arbor Day. Need a motion, Commissioners?
I move to approve proclamation 21-08-001 as presented.
Have a motion from Commissioner Lentz to have a second.
A second.
Have a second from Jane. Discussion?
The only thing that I would say is, could you read it? I think it is so.
Oh, I'm going to. Yes, y'all. The proclamation reads, whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now celebrated throughout the nation and the world, and whereas the American chestnut tree was a major source of beauty and an important resource of food and lumber at the time of Montry's inception at the end of the 19th century, and whereas during the first four decades of the 20th century, approximately 90% of the species was destroyed by blight. And whereas the American Chestnut Foundation has been working to develop a blight-resistant variety of the American chestnut, and whereas the Town of Montry Board is working with the American Chestnut Foundation in its efforts to reintroduce this iconic species to Montry in western North Carolina. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Town of Montry Board of Commissioners hereby designate September the 4th, 2021, as Arbor Day in the Town of Montry, and urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and the American Chestnut Foundation to reintroduce the American chestnut to Montry and to continue to protect our trees and woodlands. Read and approved this 12th day of August 2021. Have a motion. I have a second. It's been read. How did the Commissioners vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Eyes carry. Texas Road Repair. Discussion with possible action. Who's covering that? Alex, you cover that? You and Barry?
No, sir, I'm not. Jesse Gardner from CDC Engineering is here tonight. And he's able to, to walk us through the design.
Good afternoon, Mayor. For Jesse Gardner with Civil Design Concepts. Hopefully, you've seen, seen the drawings we've prepared. Probably a couple of things I just want to point out as, as y'all look to take action on this is the construction industry is covered up right now. And very busy and also seeing some supply chain issues between pipe, concrete, and, and other factors that seem to be working themselves out for our, this current time. Very problematic for some projects. My big picture advice would probably, if you, and I'm not, I know the, I think FEMA is a potential funding source, but don't know the deadline. I would look to maybe put this thing out to bid closer to the beginning of the year if this was, had time when contractors maybe aren't as busy and are looking to schedule their work for the following year with potential breaking ground, you know, somewhere first of March or winter is over. And another piece of advice is the, we do believe the, as working with the Geotech engineer that designed specifically the wall, the Ready Rock system will be probably 25 to 30% more than the Gabyan Basket Wall, which is what, or is what was constructed there on Graybeard Trail. So those are my big picture advices. We're, we're happy to, you know, we could end up designing a Gabyan Basket Wall and bid on both and have real numbers for both. But a couple of logistics just make the, I think the Ready Rock Wall is maybe a little more aesthetically pleasing to, to the board potentially. But cost is a little higher because of that. Be happy to answer any specific questions. Yes, sir.
You've been out there and looked at it, of course, and worked with it. How much longer is that going to last? Is it going to last till the first of the year? Are we going to end up eating up the rest of that road?
I think it will last till the first of the year. I think we need to keep it barricaded off as you've done. But yeah, I think it will continue to last.
Can't.
Without a 500-year storm, which happens, right? And I think we're in hurricane, hurricane.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, but, but it's also been there since, what, two years now?
Yeah.
So.
So, so I'll jump in on that, Jesse. For, for whatever reason, this sort of been a pet peeve of mine because it has been delayed of so much process that we have to go through, which I understand. But it has created something that, I'll just throw out a number of it was going to be 100,000 now, you know, who knows? I certainly, I was, so I was just there two days ago looking at Texas Road, and then I was up on Graybeard. I think the, the work that was done on Graybeard now with the plantings and all, you know, when you drive by, it really looks, looks nice. Now, I'm not looking at it from the other side of the, the river, but with the plantings and all, again, I think aesthetically it looks great on, on Graybeard. But, you know, more importantly, as, as the cost, you know, we've got water lines, road, everything that could potentially be affected. I certainly would like to see the pricing of the, is it gable basket type? And, and see, especially, you know, if we're talking 25, 30% lower, I'd like to see how that plays out. And just again, I'm kind of pinning you in a corner here, but obviously, within the industry I'm, I'm in, I've seen that, that prices are up across the board on, on multiple things for multiple reasons. That being said, what, what do you think the increase right now, if, if you quoted $100,000 for a project, you go out and bid it, what kind of premium are they putting on top of that?
Probably 20, 25%. And it's always about competition.
Yep.
And right now, there's not as much competition because certain contractors are, got their year booked out, right? I mean, they're, they, they're not looking for work for the rest of the year because they've got more than they can do right now. And, and I'm kind of seeing it all across my industry of just surveyors. It takes me, you know, two months to get a surveyor to get to a site because he's booked out. And, and so that's why that, I think we're seeing every bit of a premium on projects that like this. And this is more of a smaller size project. This is not like, you know, you know, I'm saying, under $500,000 site work job is a pretty small contract and, and a small job. So even the smaller outfits that I tried, you know, I always try to play, all right, this guy's a good size firm for this size project. The smaller guys that are capable of doing a job like this are swamped. You know, the bigger outfits have the ability to manage, you know, more work. But it's the smaller guys that are already promised, overpromised the rest of the calendar year. So I would say, yeah, every bit of 20 to 25% premium is, is on, is on, on things we're actively bidding right now at site work.
So, so just to follow that up and thank you for that comment is, is to say, I would like, like to look at additional pricing on a different style. But with what you just said, I think we, we need to consider though of still trying to get some information where the council can make a decision so we can start getting all the books. Because, you know, December will be here before we know it, and if we don't watch it, we're, we're bidding this one out next June, July, and, and who knows what the price would go up to if we have additional damage.
So to, to, the best way to have apples-to-apples number would be for me to design a Gabyan Basket Wall and bid both. And honestly, put them both out to bid. I have the contract. It's ready to go out to bid, but I, I think we bid it, maybe put it out about Christmas time and try to receive bids at the end of January. And I think that would be the most competitive time, you know, just don't have a, a crystal ball predicted in the future. I feel like a lot of logistics and, and it slowed down, not necessarily slowed down, but, you know, site work slows down in the winter because they're not moving there. They have a little more time, and they're probably looking, okay, let's start scheduling spring work. And that, that would be, I think, the most advantageous time. However, we can do it earlier if, if, if you want. I think construction still would probably want to start in March because we probably don't have enough window to start and finish before weather becomes problematic either. And so that's the, if I were to put, put this bid out, thing out to bid tomorrow, they're going to be griping about my schedule. It's, it's like, I'm, I think I put 90 days, a similar construction schedule to what we had at Graybeard. But I think as I got, would get feedback from, from site work contractors that it'd be like, I need more time than that because I can't get to it in 90 days. That would be one. And I, I placed a couple of phone calls just to, to the people that I would anticipate putting this out to bid, and they kind of echoed that. I can't, I'm swamped. Could you add a little more? They'll bid it, but they'd need more time, right? Is, is, was the response to me.
Hey Jesse, when did you see it last?
See what?
The wall.
I was up there probably two and a half weeks ago.
And how long before that to compare?
Couple, me and my designers were there with the Geotech probably three months before that, I would say, as, as after we were reviewing, once we had survey in hand.
Because I went by the other day, and it's so, it's so much worse. I was shocked how much worse it is. I mean, I guess if you say it can last till December, but it's not until December. It's lasting until next March.
That's right. We, again, we can take preventative measures. We could backfill with some washstone or something like that just to fill in the, the holes that I'd imagine is what's called, what, what's resulting from erosion and rainfall.
Other comments? Questions? Oh, I would like to see you go ahead with the preventive measures right now with the washstone or whatever to keep anything else from happening. And then proceed as Kent has requested with the, with the two bids and let us start looking at it. And, you know, maybe we can bid it in December. If that's okay with you. Will that work?
It worked. The pleasure of this board for sure.
Okay, Barry, will that work with you? Okay, Alex?
Thank you. No, that definitely will work. I, I did want to add to the context of the conversation that I reached out to the North Carolina Department of Emergency Management earlier today. I spoke with two different people. I got different answers from the two different people, of course. But what I'm concerned with is when we put this budget together, we budgeted $125,000 for this project. We know we're going to be over budget regardless of whether we do Ready Rock or Gabyan Basket. Thank you. So I, I reached out to them because the way that the Alberta projects work is that the state is paying 75% of the project, and the local municipality is paying 25%. And I wanted to see what the avenue was for increasing our budget now that we're already in the engineering phase. One response that I got was, no, since you've already received money, reimbursement for the engineering that we've already received, we can't change our budget. The other response was, well, we might be able to change the budget. We'll just have to apply and go through the application process. So there's a possibility that anything over the 125,000 that we originally budgeted would, we'd be on the hook for as a town. And I want to make you aware of that before you make your decisions.
Well, until we know what we're going to be bidding on, you know, it's till we know what, what it's going to be over, I don't know if the Commissioners can even make an informed decision. So if we get information, take care of what's happening right now. Make sure we don't have any further damage. And then go with the baskets and, and the wall and see what the, you know, the opposing bids are on that or the estimates, okay? Okay. Any other comments, Commissioners? All right, annual renewal contact, contract for zoning administration. All right, annual renewal contact, contract for zoning administrator. This is where we pay Land of Sky for Scott's work.
Yes.
And he works for us a couple of days a week as our planning and zoning administrator.
That's correct.
So you have the proposal before you. Alex, you want to make any comments on it?
I do. So this proposal is a slight increase. It's fully budgeted within this year's adopted budget. I think it's about a 5% increase over last year. I will note that last year, there was no increase over the previous year, and that was because of the pandemic. The Land of Sky did not want to add additional costs to municipalities. But this year, they are providing COLA for all of their staff. And this provides COLA for two years essentially at once. But the, the contract is fully budgeted within the, this year's operating budget. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have about it.
Any questions, commissioners? I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the renewal contract with Land of Sky Regional Council on the amount of $58,656 and to authorize the town administrator to sign.
I have a motion by Commissioner Otto. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Fouché. Discussion and/or questions? All those in favor of the motion then signify by saying aye. Opposed, ayes carry. Item D is a well on Texas Road Repair Contract. This well was hit by lightning. And the drilling firm that we worked with had either a death on staff or in the family and has delayed us being able to get to this and we'll get this well back in commission, hopefully. Barry?
Yes, sir. Like I say, on the 12th, like you was talking about, we had Lightning Stripe well A at the Dust Bowl. I've been talking with Jeff at Caldwell-Will Drilling. We've been getting quite a bit of air in the system and that is one of the wells that we're getting air from. When it pumps down, it runs out of water. And then as Aquifer fills it back up, it'll pump water to catch air again. So we're going to do, that's the reason it's, the price that it is, we're going to actually have them install a test pump. And we're going to do a 24-hour drawdown so we know actually what the yield is so we can rate the correct pump for that well and try to start alleviating the air problems that we're having.
Questions or comments to Barry? Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, also, that I just mentioned. We are going to be able to work with our insurance company, so pretty much our deductibles are.
Good. I'll entertain a motion, commissioners.
Mayor? To approve contract with Ruben Caldwell Drilling, Inc. in the amount of $15,834.93.
Have a motion from Commissioner Lentz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mayor Pro Tem Widmer. Discussion and/or questions? All in favor of the motion then signify by saying aye. Opposed, ayes carry. Next item on the agenda is public comment again. Yes, Martha. Mary, you're up next.
Martha Campbell, 149 Maryland Place. And I want to thank Letta Jean for the history lesson that she reminded us of and gave anew to some people who haven't been around Montreat. Those of you who were around when the 2008 Comprehensive Plan was being prepared may remember, I remember going to Upper Anderson and sitting around tables and each table had a moderator. And we just talked about some of what we thought are dreams and things that we wanted from Montreat. And it must have been a very interesting process and it's good to have it professionally prepared because I think if I'd prepared it, I might not have suggested for the final plan, a few things that were in there. So it's good to have, to have a observer who can give us a really unbiased opinion. When I went on the town council and I brought the minutes from my first council retreat with me because I didn't realize until I started studying the Comprehensive Plan, kind of how the council used the plan in, at the retreat and in all the months following. There were, there was one section called ideas that were not begun, the strategies, some of the things not begun. So it was long-term goals that the council and the staff kind of set to the side to not begin. One of them that I was reminded of was about creating a historical district. That was, if I, as I recall, and Letta Jean will have to correct me, as I recall, that one was suggested by people who didn't live on Assembly Drive but wanted Assembly Drive to be a historical district. And they didn't all live here all the time, but it would have certainly affected a family whose home was flooded one winter from a burst pipe. And they took it down almost to the ground before they rebuilt it on Assembly Drive. Those historical district specifications, as you probably know, can be difficult in a bad situation. Another suggestion I noticed was in there was, it was under the ways you could increase revenue for the town. And one idea was to pay a geotechnical firm to come check all the roads and figure out how much weight each road could take from vehicles on the roads. And then we would, we would have some sort of a tax, a fee or something for heavy vehicles driving on our roads. Whether that was everybody's moving van or the trucks full of gravel or, or all the way down to the garbage truck, I don't know. But I think one of the instructive things is that we hear from everybody's point of view that we can consider all the different ways. So I thank Letta Jean for bringing that up today. You'll each have your own way as a council of how you determine your goals and the plans for the town. But thank you for budgeting a renewal of this kind of a planning process. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Mary?
Mary Standard, 118 Shenandoah Terrace. I think it's fitting that here in Montreat, we should have Mary following Martha and Mary's married to Joseph. So fitting within Montreat. Also, you might sort of view this as a good cop, bad cop, though it's not planned. And unfortunately, I seem to occupy the role of bad cop. So I'll just give you that advance warning. Having served on council for six years with Letta Jean after the 2008 Comprehensive Plan, I want to reiterate how closely that was followed and what a shock it was to read in the mayor's summary of the July 8th meeting, the words that I responded that the 2008 Comprehensive Plan had not been widely followed. It was a shock and in part, I'm getting back to that original point. I was unable to listen to the July meeting because you couldn't hear anything that was being spoken from the public. So I do, and having served on council for eight years, one of the things that I learned and you know, is that the council, rightly so, controls the narrative. You, you own the minutes, what goes in the meeting, minutes of the meeting, what does not go into the minute. And also with the newer technology that's widely used and the Montreat minutes and things that go out, you also have an avenue to the public, which you need to be very careful how it's used. And I don't think it's intentional, but that it needs to be strictly to the point. And to read that in the mayor's summary, which was sent out the night, the day after the meeting, those are the first words that people are going to read, that it had not been widely followed, which is incorrect, as we've heard tonight. So I am hopeful that in tomorrow's summary that goes out, that there will be a clear retraction of that because what people have seen first is what people remember. And I thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? You know, I've already said I'm sorry one time and I'll say it a sorry again. I used some wrong words, Letta Jean, and I apologize that it wasn't followed. It was followed. There are still some things to be done, is what I meant to say. A lot of things to be done. And that's why we're moving forward with the Comprehensive Plan to build on it. Thank you for all that you've done for the town, Martha. I thank you. Mary? Yeah, okay. Anybody else? Eric, thank you, buddy. Anybody else? Okay. Commissioners, communications?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to say a word about Land Care. Land Care met on the 4th of August, having not had an meeting in July, which is, it's typical practice. If you've not been to the Land Care website recently, montreatlandcare.org, it really looks so nice. There's a lot of work on it. It looks really wonderful. So I encourage you to do that. Also, Commissioner, just to give you a heads up, Land Care is updating its bylaws. And so in September or October, I will bring to you a new draft of bylaws for your consideration for our action, if that's what we choose to do. These have not been updated since 2012. And a couple of people have been working very hard on getting these updated. So that will be coming in the next month or so for you. And then on tree board, I think enough's been said with regard to Arbor Day coming up on September 4th. Having read the proclamation, it's a really exciting event that will take place here from 10 to 2. You've seen, I hope, the announcements of this in the Montreat Minute. Thank you, Commissioner Widmer, for that. And there will be more publicity coming as well. Ezra, we'll look forward to seeing you here on that day. Delighted that you can come. It will be here at Town Hall, 10 to 2 on the Saturday before Labor Day. So that's it. Thank you.
I got a plate full tonight. If you'll indulge me here for a minute. I want to start by calling out the folks on the back row. Good to see Mr. DeBeau's senior here. And then Mr., I'm going to say Mr. DeBeau's junior. This is somewhat directed just as far as the, with the, and I know y'all rebranded, so it's not the MRA, but Mountain, what's your name? Oh, it's still Mountain, MRA. Okay, maybe that's what I was thinking. And what I was going to say is, is I hope that y'all had a successful summer. It was great seeing the youth going up and down Tennessee. And it didn't feel 100% normal here in Montreat, but it felt, felt pretty doggone good. So it was great hearing the, the voices of the young people. So I appreciate that taking place. And I want to address, I see Mr. Nickel, Ms. Campbell, Mayor Taylor, Ms. Standard. I've said it before, I appreciate the work that, and the tough rows that y'all plowed prior to me coming on this council. And I'm thankful for what this council has been doing. And I really don't like this council, that council. I kind of like to thank my neighbors served and I think you did it well. Now we got some other neighbors serving and I hope we're trying to do it well. But as you said, Mayor Taylor, it's a wonderful community and it's an honor to serve. So thank y'all for what y'all did. And again, I'm appreciative to be sitting here. And then lastly, it's good to see the college students rolling in today. And I will follow up a little bit more going forward. But this year, they are going to, if my times are correct, they are going to provide on Fridays from 9:00 to 11:00, a group of students to serve the community. No strings attached as far as paying. It's just kind of like, if you need some leaves rate or some trash load, I don't think they're going to build a deck for you, but they will do small chores. And like I said, it is strictly for the students to get to know their neighbors and to serve the community. So again, I'll have some contact information. It will not go through the council, but that's just, just public information that, that I'll push off to the, to school to handle. But I think it is a good service for our community.
Dates to remember. Tree Board meets August 24th, 9:30, Zoom software and in-person attendance in the town hall. Board of Adjustment training meeting on August 24th, 7:00 PM by Zoom software and in-person attendance here at the town hall. Montreat Land Care, September the 1st, 10:30 AM in the Allen Building. Planning and zoning commission, September 1st, 10:30 AM by Zoom software and in-person attendance in the Montreat Town Hall. Montreat Arbor Day Celebration, September the 4th, 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM at Montreat Town Hall. Is that right, Martha? Is it going to be here?
Yes.
It's going to be, celebration is going to be here. Because usually we hold it on the field, but anyway. Town Hall closed for Labor Day. No sanitation services. We'll resume on Tuesday the 7th. Planning and zoning commission, September the 9th, Zoom software, in-person attendance at the town hall. Town council meeting, the 9th, at 7:00 PM. Public forum at 6:30 PM. Board of Adjustment tentative, September the 23rd, 7:00 PM by Zoom software and in-person attendance. And Montreat Tree Board, September the 28th, 9:30 AM by Zoom software and in-person attendance. That's all that's on the agenda. I do have a closed session. Do I have a motion?
Move to enter into closed session in accordance with NCGS 143318116 for discussion of personnel matter.
I have a motion from Commissioner Fouché. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Otto. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, ayes carry. We'll adjourn to the boardroom over here. Y'all are welcome to stay if you want to. We'll be out whenever.